Five, we will reconvene in open session, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been a closed session under sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. On behalf of the Board, I want to apologize to everybody. I know we're starting about a half hour late. There were a number of things we had to discuss in closed session, and we'll get through the agenda as quickly as possible. Remind you that this meeting of the Waco Independent School District Board of Trustees has all things discussed and voted upon as posted and required by the state law. I also want to remind you that the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. It's management is the sole responsibility of the Superintendent and his staff. Don't have a huge crowd tonight, but if you have a cellphone or with you, if you would turn it off or silence it at this time, we'd appreciate it. Want to welcome anybody watching at home on Channel 17, and at this time, we'd ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, Thank you. We'll move on to item six, Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Cedar Ridge Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome Angelique Vigil and Jamarien Vincent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Board members, the next item on the agenda is actually the public meeting on the budget. I'm assuming there's no objection if we do special recognition out of order. Okay, Mr. De Beer?
Okay.
We'll do the special recognition.
Thank you, students. Trustees, Dr. Nelson, if you would join me in front of the dais for tonight's special We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting this evening with an introduction of our pledge leaders who both attend Cedar Ridge Elementary School. Angelique Vigil is a first grader at Cedar Ridge Elementary School. She says that she loves school and all subjects are her favorites. In her spare time, she enjoys singing and playing soccer. When she grows up, Angelique wants to become a veterinarian. Angelique's kindergarten teacher, Ms. Huffman, says that Angelique is a leader among her peers, a motivated learner, and she always has a cheerful disposition. Angelique's parents, Sandra and Mario Perez, have accompanied her here tonight. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you as well as your daughter? Thank you for sharing Angelique with us this evening. Jamarien Vincent is a fifth grader at Cedar Ridge Elementary School, and his favorite subject is math. Jamarien likes playing football and video games with friends. He especially enjoys playing Fortnite and is working on becoming the best football player that he can be. That's because when Jamarien grows up, he wants to be a professional football player. Jamarien's teacher describes him as a kind-hearted young man with a very fun-loving and positive attitude. Jamarien's teacher says that he is a helper and works very hard at whatever he is trying to accomplish. Jamarien is joined this evening by his mother, Brittany Vincent, and a host of other family members. Would you please stand so that we can thank you for raising such a wonderful son? We also want to say thank you to our adopt-a-school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving this evening. You know, it's common knowledge that Waco ISD is a force to be reckoned with at the regional and state history fair competitions, and each year, our district has sent at least one, if not a handful, of students on to compete at the national stage. This year, seven students made the trip to College Park, Maryland to compete at National History Day. One student, however, entered an additional and separate competition, and as a result, she returned from College Park with the experience of a lifetime on her resume. Gloria Canatzera, senior at Waco High School, entered her documentary, Three-Fifths to Thirteenth: The American Compromise of Black Personhood, in the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History and Culture's National History Day Documentary Showcase. Her project was the only documentary from Texas selected for this screening and was one of just 24 in the nation chosen for embracing the spirit and the mission of the museum. It was a really cool experience, and the documentaries were shown to the public in the Oprah Winfrey Theater on Wednesday during the week of the National History Day competition. In addition to the showing, she was invited behind locked doors through a private elevator by an armed guard for a private reception after the documentary with special opportunities to visit the collection at the museum. Although Gloria's project did not make it to the finals this year at the National History Day competition, she also placed in the top 20 in her category. I just want to add, this is her third time attending Nationals, where she has also won national titles and a bronze medal. Congratulations, Gloria, and especially on this special opportunity and accomplishment at this year's competition. Last month, I was pleased to introduce you to the first group of AP Scholars. These are students who have taken advantage of advanced placement courses to earn college credits in high school, allowing them to build credit early and skip introductory courses when they enroll in college. I'm really excited to introduce you to the second group of our AP Scholars this evening, beginning with a group of students who received recognition for scoring a three or higher on three or more AP tests. First, please welcome Sierra Black, who is a 2018 graduate of University High School and I'm told unable to join us this evening. But with us tonight, we do have Valeria Guerrero, who is a junior at University High School. Harper Hoover, a junior at Waco High School. Jackson Osborne, a 2018 graduate of Waco High School, now attending McLennan Community Marisol Palacios, a senior at University High School. Karen Rodriguez, a sophomore at University High School. Sorry, Corinne. Corinne, I apologize for mispronouncing your first name. I'm pleased next to introduce a student who was recognized this year as an AP Scholar with Honor. That's a recognition that's given to a student who receives a score of three or higher on four or more AP tests and an average score of 3.25 on all AP tests taken. Please welcome Anisia Rono, a 2018 graduate of University High School. Anisia is currently attending McLennan Community College. The Advanced Academics Department works tirelessly to support the incredible growth that we've seen in our Advanced Academics Program, and in particular, the record number of AP Scholars that we're recognizing this year. Last month, we recognized a couple members of that team, and tonight, we'd like to recognize Dr. Scott McClanahan, the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, for his work to support the Advanced Academics Program. Additionally, if you're a parent or family member of one of our AP Scholars, would you please stand so that we can thank you as well? Congratulations again to our record number of AP Scholars. We're really excited to see where your academic journey takes you next. The National Baptist Convention of America International hosts an annual Youth and Children's Convention that includes a variety of competitive activities. This year's convention was held in Dallas in June, and a young man from Alta Vista Elementary put his stamp on one particular event. The goal of the Bible Storytelling Competition is for participants to learn, relate, and dramatize Bible stories in a meaningful and relevant way. They must tell the story in five minutes or less, and it has to be told in the child's own words, not just memorized from a script word for word. Participants are judged and scored on poise, voice tone, delivery, time, and the closure of their story. However, before Tyler was able to even compete at the national competition, he first won first place in both the regional and state competitions, beating out several hundred contestants for the ability to continue on and take on competitors from California, Arkansas, and Georgia over the three-day national contest. At this time, please join me in recognizing and congratulating national champion Tyler Tyler walked away with first place for his telling of the story of David and Goliath. Tyler and his twin brother are currently in the third grade at Alta Vista Elementary. He also has two other siblings who attend Waco ISD schools and an older sibling at the University of Texas. Both of Tyler's parents, Alfred and Kelly Freeman, are employees of Waco ISD. Would Tyler's family please stand so that we can recognize you as well this evening? Thank you for being such an amazing representative of Waco ISD. It may have been summer break for the majority of our students, but a group of Waco ISD athletes were sweating and working hard out in the heat, and that hard work paid off in a big way. The Waco Southern Senior League Baseball Team, which includes nine Waco ISD students, fought their way through a number of teams and games to compete at and win the Texas West State Championship to continue on to claim their title as champions of the Southwest Region, which included beating out teams from Louisiana, New Mexico, Colorado, and Texas, which qualified them in turn for a spot in the 2018 Senior League Baseball World Series in Eastlake, South Carolina. Although this team didn't make it to the finals, these student-athletes showed grit and determination from beginning to end, and tonight, we'd like to recognize the members of the team for their outstanding accomplishments and for representing our community on the national stage. From University High School, please welcome first Juan Diego Aguilar. And David Gonzalez. From Waco High School, I'd like to introduce you to Jesse Maldonado. And we'd also like to recognize two of their teammates who attend other schools in our area, John Guerrero. And Anthony De La Fuente. Not only is the majority of this team made up of Waco ISD students, but four of the five coaches for the Waco Southern team are proud alumni of Waco ISD. Please join me in recognizing head coach Jason Ramos. And the team's assistant coaches, Stevie Flores, a graduate of University High School. Steve Flores, also a graduate of University High School. John Ramos, a graduate of University High School. And while Jovick Martinez was unable to join us this evening, we'd also like to note that he too is a graduate of University High School. This past year, we asked our community to step forward and invest in our students, and they came forward, the community came forward, to share its time, its talents, its energy, its resources in a myriad of ways, and that effort continues as we move into the new school year. This summer, the Office of External Affairs at Baylor University launched the Solid Gold Neighbor Initiative. The Solid Gold Neighbor Program is committed to working together with its neighboring communities to address systemic issues, and a number of nonprofits joined Baylor University to team up and support teachers and students at the five campuses that are part of our in-district Charter Partnership Program through a drive to organize and raise school supplies for the entire year for all of the classrooms at those five campuses. Tonight, we're excited to recognize representatives of the organizations that took part in the school supply drive organized by the Solid Gold Neighbor Program, beginning first with Liz Legawa, who's a family support specialist previously at Prosper Waco and now joining the Waco ISD staff. Alfred Solano, who's the Executive Director of the Central Texas Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Yvonne Mendoza is the Community and Development Manager for the Chamber. Sandra Dorsey Butler is a member of the Waco ISD Compensatory Education Services Department. Shirley Langston is joining us from GW Carver Middle School. Dr. Peaches Henry is the President of the Waco NAACP. And the leader of the effort, please welcome Baylor University's Director for Community Engagement and Initiatives, Ramona Curtis. Together, these organizations collected 70,000 pencils, 5,000 pocket folders, more than 3,000 composition notebooks, more than 1,000 boxes of crayons, more than 140 very large bottles of hand sanitizer, and 853 middle school packets that included a wide variety of supplies. In total, their contributions to our students are worth nearly $12,000 or were supported by $12,000 collected by 65 donors. This group has made a tremendous difference for our students, and we're excited to recognize them as we start this new school year with appreciation for the community's support. Thank you so much. That concludes the special recognition portion of our evening.
All right. Dr. Nelson, you have one more announcement or recognition you want to recognize this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to introduce tonight, for the first time, the new Dean of Instruction at Indian Springs Middle School. She is a 34-year veteran of the Waco Independent School District. She spent 22 years at University Middle School as a math teacher, two years at GL Wiley Middle School as a math teacher, six years as the math content specialist for the district, and four years at GW Carver Middle School as an instructional specialist. She has a Master's of Education degree from Tarleton State University, and her undergrad from the Angelo State University. In her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her family, her husband of 33 years, three daughters, Dionne, Jocelyn, and Ebony, and son-in-law, Ron, and most of all, her grandson, Brayden. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome the new Dean of Instruction at Indian Springs, Ms. Janet Joyner. Ms. Joyner, would you like to introduce your guest?
I have my husband, who's been working for years, Elaine. I have my daughter, Jocelyn, my little Jordan daughter, who is a new teacher at Waco.
All right.
My daughter from Compton, Texas, who works for Fidelity Investments. And then I have my daughter, who's an educator at Seeger Chartered. And then, I want to also say the third graduate of University High School. And then I have my principal, Mr. Alexander. And then I have some church members here. And I have a lot of friends at Waco ISD, so I'm proud and ready to work. Just look forward that the little school on 500 North here is going to be a premier school in my final chapters.
Also, I know it's out of customary, but I would like to recognize one of our trustees who celebrates a birthday today. I'm not sure what her birthday is, but today's her birthday, so we'll say happy birthday to Ms. Angela Teckel.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Nelson. I think there's one item that we need to discuss, and I know we have a board member needs to leave at eight o'clock. Is there any objection to taking item 10C out of order to move on and talk about the agreement with the approval of the agreement with the city and the county? All right, hearing no objection, we'll move down to item 10C. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, item 10C reads, "Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Real Property Transfers and Conveyances Provided for in the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between McLennan County, Waco Independent School District, and the City of Waco pursuant to Chapter 791 of the Texas Government Code, and to provide for and support certain voter-approved venue projects for land in and near the Heart of Texas Fair Complex." I would like to thank our outstanding general counsel, Mr. Peter Rusik, for his diligence and legal counsel on this issue that we've been discussing for several years now. I would also like to thank our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Israel Carrera, who has coordinated to work with our independent architect on this. And at this time, we'll entertain the discussion from the board. Mr. President?
We can either entertain a motion and then proceed. Or we can discuss it and then see if there's a motion. We're kind of informal on Robert's rules. I know we've discussed this at length. Are there any comments or questions from any board members, or is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Manning?
I may have to use... Mr. Rusik, one of the questions that I've been thinking about, if we go through with this agreement, and I know there was a bunch of unanswered questions on that list that we had, is there a possibility that we could, if the city or county don't come up and answer some of those questions as to favor us or whatever, what's the possibility of pulling out of it? Is there any possibility, if we approve it, do we have a out?
If we approve it, Mr. Manning, if the board, there's a motion and a second, and a majority of the board voting approves it, I think we're in it. I don't think, once the board approves that and the transfers are made, which is a key part of this, I don't think that just because we don't like how it's going at that point, we could pull out of it, no more than the city or the county or the fair could.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I don't think there is a package. There's not anything in the agenda.
Is there anything in there?
No.
It's what we gave you in close session under real estate.
I handed it back, because I thought it was...
Oh, well, let us get you a copy of it.
Okay, well, that's all right. You got a copy? Well, no, it was the motion that we were voting on. Elaine handed it to me. Thank you, Elaine. There, the language, sorry.
That's not what we vote, no.
We're not there yet.
Oh, no, that's the property tax.
This is the flu information.
That's why I gave it.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
There was no language.
No, 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 not even the picture. I'm just trying to figure out the language of the...
The language is...
Is in there? Says discussions.
Now, Mr. President?
Yes?
If you wanted to approve this trustee dupuy, then you would be making a motion to approve the real property transfers and conveyances.
I see it, I just...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Is that a motion?
No, not why.
All right.
Well, I do want, yes.
You want to pull the mic towards you, Carrie? I'm sorry.
I move that we approve real property transfers and conveyances provided for in the interlocal cooperation agreement between McLennan County, Waco ISD, and City of Waco pursuant to Chapter 791 of the Texas Government Code, and to provide for and support certain voter-approved venue projects for land in and near the Heart of Texas Fair Complex.
I think there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Corda Weg. All right. I know, there are a number of questions. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Teckel. I wasn't looking. Ms. Teckel, you have questions?
I had a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So, this has, we have talked a lot, talked about this a lot, and it's a difficult decision for me because I am here to protect the interests of Waco ISD, and our campus at Waco High School is, and the impact of this project on Waco High School is of great concern to me and I think to the board. But I am going to vote for this tonight and hope that we can continue to work with the county and the city, that we can be partners on the project going forward, and that we have our unanswered questions answered, and it's to the best interest of all of us because we're here for our kids and we're here for this complex, and we want to make sure our kids have the best. And of course, we want to be supportive, I want to be supportive of the county's effort... But it's difficult because there hadn't been just a great answer for us in the way that this land is divided and how we make sure our kids are taken care of. But I would just say that I trust the administration, Dr. Nelson, and his team to work with the city and county to make sure that we get the best for our kids moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Teckel. Other comments, questions from the board? Mr. Manning?
I just want to test out my mic. Yes, it's working, but...
Is that all you had, was a mic test? No, go ahead.
No, I concur with Mrs. Teckel. There's a lot of questions, but we're going to move forward with the belief that we will be taken care of between the city and the county.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been a process that's gone on for an extended period of time, and we've received a lot of information. There's been a lot of, I guess, concerns, interaction, questions along the way, and we still have a lot of items that will need to be considered very carefully as we go forward. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of, as Ms. Teckel said, improving the facilities for our students at WISD and the Waco High Campus. But this is a rare and unique, I say somewhat rare and unique, opportunity that we can enhance the offerings that we have in the community as a whole through the county and the city. So, I'm looking forward to making these improvements on the campus, but also looking forward to the opportunity to continue to discuss with the city and the county other ways because we all hold property throughout the, throughout the county, and we will have other projects that will come and go, but I hope this marks a, hopefully, a new phase of open collaboration with the city and county going forward, again, as Angela said, for the benefit of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Ms. Perez?
Yes, there's, to me, there's so many unanswered questions that we still need to talk with the county and the city, so I'm unhappy with it, so I'll just, I'll vote a no tonight until I get more on it.
Other questions, comments? I do want to say this, I think everybody on this board is to be commended because I think you've approached this with a great deal of thoughtfulness and putting in the time and really looking towards what's in the best interest of our children and whether or not this is something that will significantly improve the facilities for our students at Waco High with the understanding that we're going to have to put some funding into that ourselves. And I just, I appreciate the deliberation. I think when it comes down to it, and there have been some outstanding questions raised, and I wholeheartedly agree that we don't have answers to all those questions, but it is an opportunity, when you look at the two options we have, if we approve the agreement, we come out with about 12.3 acres more of land than we end up with if we don't do the agreement. We end up with a new facility for track and soccer as opposed to continuing to put money into a very old Paul Tyson Stadium. And I think at the end that although some of this is going to be paid for by the district, I do think, I agree, that it's, it's in the best interest of our kids, and I also agree with Mr. Sykes that it is a unique opportunity to really help the city and the county improve venue opportunities with the new Little League fields and the Heart of Texas Fair and Rodeo Complex, the Extra Co. Event Center. And so, I, I probably, I will vote yes this evening. Anybody else have any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement and the conveyances as presented. Mr. Perez, prior to the meeting, asked for a roll call vote. Chris, do you want to call the roll?
Trustee Dupuy?
Yes.
Trustee Teckel?
Yes.
Trustee Sykes?
Yes.
President Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries six to one. We will now go, and thank you again to everybody for the questions and discussion. We will now move back up on the agenda to our public meeting, which is Item 7. This is the public meeting to discuss the 2018-19 budget, proposed tax rate, and receive any input or public comment. Is that going to be Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? I guess formally, I will recess the board meeting and call to order this public hearing on the tax rate and budget.
Yes, the hearing tonight and then the subsequent adoption of the budget and approval of the tax rate culminates about an eight-month process in developing our official budget for the district. We are required, under Education Code 44002, the superintendent or as designated prepares a budget for the following fiscal year, and we have posted a summary of the proposed budget as required by law after we had our meeting on August 2nd, and it is available online on the district's website. Under the Texas Property Tax Law, which is also comes into play because of the tax rate, there, the concepts of truth in taxation, there's four principles, and that properties, property owners have the right to know of increases in properties' appraised value and be notified of the resulting estimated taxes, and the district must publish its proposed tax rate, rollback tax rate, and other specific information about its proposed taxes. That is, was published on August 13th. That is part of a notice that is in a format that's required by law. A district must also publish the budget and the proposed tax rate meeting notice and hold a public meeting, which we're doing right now, to provide the citizens an opportunity to give us input on both the budget and tax rate. And then the district must hold an election to ratify a tax rate if it is above our rollback rate. We are not adopting a tax rate above our rollback rate, so a tax rate adoption or election would not be necessary. This is our budget timeline, so again, we started the budget development process in February 15th with the Board of Trustees. We have had subsequent meetings to inform the board of various issues, items of interest. We did some early projections in March, and then did a federal programs review in April. We received our preliminary property values in May, and then talked about our preliminary budget and looked at salary increase, benefit increase proposals in July. We do, we did receive the certified values from our chief appraiser. They are due by law by July 25th. We actually received those on the 23rd this year. And then we had a presentation of the proposed budget, which must be done by the 20th of August. We did that on August 2nd, and as I said, we published that notice on the 13th. And now, tonight, we must adopt a budget and tax rate prior to August, or by August 31st, and so that's on the schedule for later in the meeting. The tax rates are composed of two parts, the M&amp;O rate and the interest in sinking rate. The M&amp;O rate pays for most of the general operations of the district and is basically our match for the state revenue that we get. And then the INS taxes pay for the principal and interest on voter-approved bond issues. The collections for both of those, as I said, serve as our local match for leveraging the state revenues. This is our, the segments, the next few slides will be part of that notice that we have to publish by law. This is our truth in taxation notice, the total appraised value and the total taxable value. The total appraised value of all properties for this year was just right over 9.1, almost $9.2 billion. At last year, it was $8.3 billion. We have appraised value of new property, little bit down from last year. Last year, we had $141 million worth of new property. This year is right at $105 million. Our total taxable value of all property is at $5.8 billion, up from $5.3 billion last year. And again, you see that difference in the taxable value of our new property. The total amount of bonded indebtedness that we have as of right now is $155,130,000. And again, that is the debt that is funded through our INS tax rate. Looking at our proposed rates with last year's rates, we do a comparison of the revenue that it generates last year compared to what it's going to generate this year. The total tax rate last year was $1.17, $1.17 for M&amp;O, 24 cents for our interest in sinking fund, so a total rate of $1.41. That generated local revenue of $5,325 per student and state revenue of $4,0714. Our rate, we have to calculate a rate that tells us what we would need to generate the same level of revenue. That would be for our maintenance and operation, $1.13, and a little over 24 cents on our interest in sinking fund, for a total rate of $1.37. Our proposed rate for this year, $1.17, again, that is the maximum rate that has been approved by the, both, both approved by our voters, and it is the maximum rate under the law that we can set. And then we are recommending an interest in sinking rate of 23.4 cents for a total rate of just over $1.40. That will generate $5,868 per student in local revenue and $4,382 in state revenue. The average market value of residences in the district went up substantially. Last year, the average market value was $116,322. This year, the average market value is $133,852. The average taxable value of a residence last year was $84,630 and has increased to $95,842. Last year's tax rate, again, was $1.41. We have dropped it to $1.40.4 for the, this coming year. So, the taxes due on average residents last year was $1,193.28. This year, it will be $1,245.70. That is an increase of $152.42. Now, note that that increase is due to the increase in value because we've actually lowered our rate slightly. The rollback rate is calculated at the rate that we have set, which is the $1.40.408.1, where we took the point one off of the end, but, so the taxes frozen on the over 65 and disabled homesteads that are frozen, tax bills will not go up, the taxes will never increase unless improvements are made to the homestead. So, that's important for our over 65 and disabled taxpayers. On the official budget, we have three funds that make up our official budget, our general fund, our child nutrition fund, and our debt service fund. TEA regulations require these three funds to be part of our official budget. So, our estimated revenues in our general fund is $145,539.04 with appropriations of That gives us an increase of $415,009. We will have an operating transfer to our Greater Waco Manufacturing and Healthcare Academies of about $415,000, so that gives us a balanced budget with a beginning fund balance of just over $40 million. Our child nutrition fund, our revenues and appropriations match at $10,176,852. We had a beginning fund balance, a projected beginning fund balance of about $1.9 million. We anticipate that to be the same at the end of next year. On the debt service fund, our estimated revenues are $14,653,186, and our estimated appropriations are a little bit higher, $14,694.90. So, we are anticipating that we will draw the fund balance down a little bit this next year, $37,000, but our beginning fund balance is more than adequate at $3.8 million, so our ending fund balance, like I said, will just be drawn down about $37,000. Looking at the official budget, as we talked about during the budget process, this is the first time for Waco ISD, at least in, since our current funding system has been in place, that our local revenues will exceed our state program revenues. We are anticipating local and intermediate source revenues of 51.6% and state program revenues of 40.7%, and then our federal program revenues make up the difference at On our official budget appropriations, as you can see, the biggest portion of the budget is, goes to direct classroom instruction, 57.4%. The next biggest piece of that is district operations, which includes plant maintenance, security, and technology services at 14%, and then from that point, student support services are about not, little over 9%, and that includes guidance and counseling, social work services, health services, food services, and extracurricular activities as well as Our budget was based on average daily attendance of 13,301, and again, based on M&amp;O tax rate of $1.17 and INS tax rate of $1.23,408. We are using the ARV-approved net taxable values of $6,347,266 plus $241 million, and that's the value that the chief appraiser tells us to use for properties who are, that are still under appeal. This includes pass-through and supplemental payments into the TIF of $5.9 million, which is an increase of about $434,000 from last year. It also includes projected rate increases for items such as utilities and known increases for contractual obligations such as tax collection and transportation. In transportation, we did have a 6.5% increase, which included a substantial wage increase for bus drivers. We had a hard time getting bus drivers this past year, so we are raising the starting pay to $15.50 per hour. And it also includes $530,000 of additional requests, including the continuation of some contracts that we initiated in the current year. And the general fund includes additional $2.9 million of additional funding for the campuses that are in the transformation zone, of which about $2.6 million of that was budgeted directly for additional zone expenditures and another $129,000 supported through purchased optional services, $558,000 in additional instructional support positions. So, our budget increases in instructional support. We added five additional teachers for the dyslexia program. We had 15. That brings us up to 20, almost one per campus. We added an additional GT teacher, an additional bilingual intervention support teacher, and support for the RTI planning, plus instructional software solutions. Again, those are continuation from some that we started in the current year. In our extracurricular support, we had some issues with helmet and shoulder pad replacements, so we put some money into that for this year. And then there are some additional costs, particularly in travel, that is associated with our UIL realignment. We are funding additional costs. We funded new band uniforms for Waco High this past year, and we will fund uniforms for University High this coming year. Little bit of an additional cost because they have a much bigger band than Waco High did. And then field trips for our credit recovery students. Our credit recovery program is paid for out-of-state compensatory education dollars, and it will not cover items such as field trips, and so we have funded some additional, about $4,000 to give them some additional money. On competitive compensation, we have increased the starting teacher pay from $45,600 to $46,100. We have a... We have a general pay increase of 1.5% for administrator and professional staff and 2% for all others, which include our paraprofessional staff, our auxiliary, and an average increase of 2% for our teachers, or about $1,000 for each teacher. We have increased the health insurance contribution 10% from $367.50 per month to $404.25 per month. And we have also had some increases in stipends and staff development. Our other district support, television equipment, so you guys can go live, do live broadcasts, and then some website management, and our online communication system, that's, again, carryover from some work that we started this year, and then internal audit assessment. This is our required internet posting and a summary of the comparison of the proposed budget. Again, this has already been posted, and it shows you by functional category what the aggregate expenditure is in the past year, the per-student amount, and then the aggregate expenditure and per-student amount for the proposed 2018-19 budget. That is the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Board members, you'll have an opportunity to discuss the budget when we get to that point on the agenda. This is the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that want to address the board regarding either the proposed budget or the proposed tax rate? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public meeting. Thank you, Ms. Davis. The next item on the agenda is audience for guests. Did anyone sign up, Christie, to speak? All right. Then we'll move on to discussion and possible action. First item is the budget, discussion, possible action to adopt the 2018-19 budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. We recommend approval of the budget as presented.
Thanks, sir. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you, Ms. Pettis. Any questions, comments, discussion from the board? Dr. Nelson.
I just wanted to thank our outstanding finance department for their tireless efforts. They spent many and many nights up here working. Balancing the budget was a little curveball that they're not exactly used to, and I want to thank you publicly, Ms. Davis, for being so collaborative and cooperative. I appreciate that leadership from your department, and I see several members of our finance department here, including, don't mean to be unprofessional, but my homie from Converse-Judson, Ms. Trotz, Mr. Cartwright, David Cartwright. I don't know if I'm missing anyone else in the department, but really the entire team, all of the department heads, cabinet, and everyone who worked so hard to reduce our budget for the record and do it in a way that still shows how much we value our most important resources, which is our employees. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. And you're very brave to start naming people because it's been brought to my attention that last year I started naming people in the department and left out Ms. Davis, which was an honest, really was, it was an oversight and was not deliberate. So this year, let me publicly say, Cheryl, thank you for all your work on putting this together. And thank you for last year, too, when I apparently left you out. All right. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The budget is adopted. We do need a resolution with very specific language with respect to item 10B, which is the tax rate.
Mr. President.
Ms. Sykes.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.40.408, which is effectively a 7.7% increase in the tax rate. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's rate. The tax rate will effectively, effectively be raised by 3.47% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $0.00.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second.
I'm giving it to Ms. Cordoway. Ms. Davis, you mentioned this in your presentation, but I want to make sure everybody understands. Obviously, when we set a tax rate, it's a multiplication problem. There's the property values, and then there's the rate that we adopt, correct?
Correct.
All right. Just so it's clear, the action, we don't have any control over the property values. The appraisal district sets those. The tax rate that we're being asked to adopt tonight does reduce our rate six tenths of a penny, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so the increase that's referenced in the motion is attributable to the increase in property values.
Correct.
All right. And that is why the impact on an owner of a $100,000 home is zero because we're not raising the actual rate. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is true in taxation.
And I know it's legislatively required to word it that way. I just wanted everybody to understand that we are, in fact, reducing the tax rate, the part that we have control over in that multiplication equation.
Can you reconcile the language for me, the 7.7 versus the later 3.47% increases?
Well, the first 7.7 is a calculation of the total rate. The 3.47 is a calculation based on only the M&amp;O rate.
Okay.
And I.
You don't remember the words.
Correct. And I will tell you that I have not been able to do this calculation myself. The tax office gives me this, and I really, it's, it's kind of magic. It is.
This is number, you're, you are given to include in our motion.
This is, this is the exact wording that I am given by the tax office to include in, in your motion, yes.
All right. Other questions, comments from the board?
I think you try to explain it, but you don't appreciate.
Well.
Other questions, comments from the board? All right. There's a motion that's been seconded to adopt the tax rate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I can actually send you the calculation.
We will move on to the consent agenda. I don't believe I've been asked to pull anything by any board members or staff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Mr. Debeer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordoway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right. Motion carries, and I guess we're now down to announcements. Dr. Nelson, Mr. Debeer?
Reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Reports and discussion. We do have Lone Star Governance. I'm sorry. Item 12A, discussion on next steps for Lone Star Governance. Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just wanted to basically inform the board that we are still having conversations with the specifics on the expectations for the Waco Independent School District Board of Trustees in terms of Lone Star Governance. Due to our increased accountability ratings, due to the fact that this board is already in compliance with the entry level of Lone Star Governance, we believe we have several options that this board can go. We just want to make sure we get confirmation from the Texas Education Agency. We will have that next month. In the meantime, we would like to recognize trustee Larry Pettis and trustee Stephanie Cordoway for being in compliance with Senate Bill 1566. And we are looking forward to inviting the rest of the board to be in compliance by the end of September through either an online course that Mrs. McCutcheon will facilitate for you or something that we can, the board will have the opportunity to do at the upcoming Tassat Asbe Convention. So it is required by law that all board members complete that. I appreciate trustee Pettis and trustee Cordoway taking care of that this summer. And the other five trustees, we're happy to facilitate whatever is most convenient for you. Also, I'm proud to announce trustee Teakel left, but she'll be presenting, leading a presentation at the Tassat Asbe Conference in September. And so that's a very special honor that she was just notified this week. So we'll have the rest. Dr. McDermott and myself will be bringing a update on Lone Star Governance next board meeting. I also wanted to invite everyone to the Transformation Zone Board Meeting this next Tuesday at 5:30 at GW Carver Library, where they'll be going over budget and wraparound services and lots of other exciting topics. So that concludes our Lone Star Governance presentation for this evening, Mr. President.
Any questions from the board? All right. Mr. Debeer, I believe you're up with announcements.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I want to begin with one small correction to our special recognitions this evening. When I introduced Gloria Canaster, I said that that was her third trip to Nationals. It was actually her fifth trip to Nationals, which is significant, not just because it's far more impressive, but also because that's a record for Waco ISD.
I will note that her mother was still here on the back row to make sure you made that correction.
Absolutely. And I appreciated the correction from her and also that she would join us, not just for the recognitions, but for our entire meeting this evening. You know, we just wrapped up the third day of a new school year, and compared to the third day last year, our enrollment is up 97 students. We finished today with 14,573 students on the rolls. Tomorrow, a number of those students are going to be in the gym at University High School when Waco High School takes on University High School in volleyball. Those games start at 5:30 with the varsity game at 7:00, and we're really excited to see that face-off this year. And the excitement will continue to build as we head into the back-to-school tradition that is the Derrick Johnson Kickoff Classic. Those are three days of games, but the highlight is absolutely the Hall of Fame Game on Friday, August 31st, when Waco High and University High face off at 7:30 PM at the Waco ISD Stadium. So a lot of exciting opportunities to see the Lions and Trojans in action over the next week or so, and just a great start to the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Debeer. Any other announcements from the dais? All right. Hearing none, 8:30. We will stand adjourned.